I appreciate everyone's patience with what is a hatefully prepared way of meeting under our new guidelines of no large gathering. So I'm calling the meeting to order. It is 7:07 PM, Monday, March 16th. We are present in the City Hall Conference Room. This line is being recorded by GCTV. Is there anyone else on the line who is recording? Okay, we'll continue with a roll call. Member Exstrom, would you be so kind as to do a roll call for us?
Of course. I need help from whoever's been online, or whoever's on the phone, because I've been unfocused.
Member Wall?
Here.
Member Exstrom also here. Mayor Weigardner?
Here.
Member Karen?
Here.
Here. Chair Poirotti here.
Poirotti is here. And I believe we have Member Holland's on the phone?
Here.
Any other?
Maybe Member?
Member Johnson, are you on the phone?
And Superintendent Harper, you are on the phone, correct?
I am on the phone. I'm aware that both Member Johnson and Steve Nimberco are having some difficulty with connecting to the line, and they're both trying to get back in.
Thank you.
Well, I didn't expect you to sound even that good. I thought you'd be almost with a voice gone.
Thank you.
So, yeah, you sound good.
Moving through the agenda, I take a motion to table the approval of draft minutes from January 27, February 12, March 4. Moved by Member Exstrom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
We have to do a roll call.
Oh, thank you.
Remember Poirotti?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Exstrom, yes, there?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Glenn, is that you?
Yes.
Welcome, Glenn. Glenn, join us.
Thank you.
Member Holland?
Yes.
Okay. Before we move to public comment, I would like to just make a quick statement as chair, that it is our intent tonight to move through the agenda only as it relates to emergency preparedness for the COVID-19 virus. There will be a motion attempted to table all other new business items and some of the committee reports. It is also our intent to attempt to pass a motion to pay all regularly scheduled employees their regularly scheduled hours through the end of the planned closing, which is through April 7, 2020. If you are calling in to give public comment on that topic, you're of course still welcome to do so, but it is our plan to move forward with that as quickly as possible tonight. The first public comment I'm going to take is the one person who is here with us in the room. I'm going to ask that actually she steps forward so that we can make sure we hear you. Member Exstrom, would you mind moving your bag and we'll have her sit there? And again, we are limiting to two minutes tonight. As we do with all public comments, I'll ask you to please state your name and address when you begin. Just a gentle reminder to folks on the conference line to please mute if you are not speaking.
My name is Shirley Gilfeather. I reside at 350 Plain Road, Greenfield, Massachusetts. I have provided a handout to the school committee members that are present. I will be sending that electronically to everyone as well. My comments are basically related to the budget item that was listed regarding the fiscal year 21 school budget. I realize there's other pressing issues on the agenda, so I'll make my verbal comments brief. My concern, as I stated at the March 4 meeting, is that I think there need to be some reviewing of some of the priorities for budgeting with the possibility of doing some reallocation. I am an educator of 42 years retired, two years of which were principal of Greenfield High School. I care deeply for the students in this district and for the priorities of providing the best quality education we can for those students. For that end, I would like to encourage the school committee members to, as they proceed with looking for a final budget for next year, that they look at the priorities of technology and providing the best technology available for our students, including more computers and updating our computers on a cyclical basis. Also professional development for our teachers, including making sure that we have an up-to-date professional development plan, that there be the retaining of quality teachers in this district, part of which would be to give them a quality and competitive salary. Also to have a physician filled, the curriculum coordinator position, which I would encourage be combined with the grants position for fiscal savings, but that that then be a current person that can help with a current district-wide articulated curriculum that we don't have and linked to state standards. And also the curriculum materials in the district that are purchased can support that district curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on in as best of an orderly fashion as possible with public comments that is on the conference line. Does someone want to go first? Don't all go at once. Okay, we will move away from public comments and on to committee reports. Before I get into the meat of the agenda and forget all about our dear mayor, I would like a motion to-
The city in front of me.
I would like a motion to add to the agenda a report from the mayor on the state of the city at this very interesting time. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Member Karen, in a second.
Yes.
Member Wall? Any discussion? All those in favor will do a roll call vote. I'm a yes. Chair Poirotti is a yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Member Holland?
Yes, I believe it goes with item 5B.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Weigardner?
Sure.
Member Exstrom is a yes.
Motion passes. Mayor Weigardner, please.
Sure. Well, as you can imagine, we're all attempting to navigate our ship of state, so to speak, or ship of the city in waters that are very difficult to navigate in. So I just want everyone to understand how amazing and well-prepared our department heads are, and how hard they're working, and how hard the city of staff is working to help us to get through this time. It's just been an incredible two and a half weeks. I would ask that the patient be, that the public be patient with us in terms of getting information out. We are, one of the things that has certainly come to light in handling this is how woefully understaffed in many areas the city of Greenfield is, not the least of which is the executive office and its ability to respond to some of these types of situations. That said, we are all, in my opinion, doing a very good job. I have a COVID-19 response team that has been meeting regularly with me for the last couple of weeks. We held our second full meeting today, and that team is made up of public safety department heads, finance, technology, health, and the schools. And when I say schools, that's Superintendent Harper, the public, your lead nurse as needed, and the chairperson of the school committee. They've been excellent, extremely helpful. So as of today, I can tell you that, and this was based on Governor Baker's release of sleeping guidelines to limit gatherings and face-to-face contact, and he also ordered all schools to close for three weeks, which you are probably well aware of. So we took the following steps based on our meeting that we held this morning. I won't give them all to you because it's quite lengthy, but I will tell you that as of Wednesday, City Hall, 20 Sanderson Street, that's Wednesday of this week, by the way, City Hall, 20 Sanderson Street, and the economic development offices are closed to the public until April 8. Staff is report, is to report to work, and the public is encouraged to use online resources or call for assistance. When I say that, I mean online resources to pay your excise tax, your property tax, your parking fines, any of those types of things. The city phone number is 413-772-1500. But most of the services for residents, including tax payments, excise tax, parking fines, and so forth, can be found under a tab on the city website called Residence. And that city website is greenfield-ma.gov. You will find links there that assist you in paying your bills. You may also drop off in the box out front so as to, we will be checking that early. So when I say that, I mean in an envelope with a check in it. You can do that, or you can mail in also. And I would encourage every member of the public who is listening to do that. Let me see, what else? Most of the city clerk's offices duties can be done on the phone or online. If you are about to get married and you have your marriage intentions, can be done by appointment with the city clerk. The DPW transfer station and curbside solid waste pickup remain open and on schedule. And I can also say that the Greenfield Public Schools and Public Safety Division have been coordinating with other towns in the county to collaborate and to aid one another. It's been not only a busy two weeks, but most of us have been working weekends as well. Is that it?
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from the school committee for the mayor?
Could I add one thing?
Please.
Actually, probably one of the most important things. Citizens, and that includes everyone in this room and people listening, should call the city department they wish to do business with for assistance. Until, we will be establishing a hotline, but it is not ready yet. So any questions about COVID-19 and our response can go to the Health Department. Very important. They're ready and waiting to answer most of your questions. That number is 413-772-1404. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor?
I have one. Thanks, Mayor Weigardner. That's amazing, and what a great team. I really appreciate all the thought that you've put into the report and sharing that with us. Is there any thought being given to waiving any of the fees involved with paying online? I think sometimes there's a convenience fee, if I'm not mistaken, but I was just curious about that.
You are correct that there are some cases there sometimes when there is a fee. And yes, we began discussing that this afternoon after, later in the afternoon, so I don't have a decision for you yet. We're looking at how that could be done temporarily and whether it can be done legally or not. We would be, we'll be attempting to work out something. But thanks for that question. You're right on top of things.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the school committee? All right, thank you, Mayor Weigardner. I will quickly do my report and then move on to the superintendent. I actually am hoping to inject a wonderful piece of good news into tonight's discussion, which is a congratulations to the Greenway hockey team, their first ever state championship, right before we all got locked down. They got it in right under the wire, and we're so proud of all of them and all of the hard work that team put into the season and the recognition they've given to Greenfield. It's just wonderful for all of us. Yes, Mayor Weigardner?
Thank you. Thank you for that, and yes, congratulations to all of them. I will say that up until COVID-19, I was fully prepared to do a proclamation and declare a Greenfield Hockey Week, with a small ceremony here at the City Hall or with the hockey coaches and the team. Well, you can see what happened to that. So just know that we have been in contact with Coach Bouchard and athletic director, and that will happen when we get the all clear. So it may be a little bit of a distance from when they actually won, but it's heartfelt anyway.
Thank you. Other items I would just like to quickly mention, I appreciate all of the members of the public in the school community who have contacted us over the past week in, with their questions and their comments regarding our operations and our change in status. We do read every single email. We try our best to respond to everything, and we are appreciative of the engagement from the community regardless of the message. We want people to feel that they can contact us about anything, and we do read everything. I also want to mention for anyone who may not already know about the food distribution sites for the kids of the community, 0 to 18 can get a grab-and-go breakfast and lunch at various sites around town. I'm not going to remember them off the top of my head, but it is 11 to 1 each day this week. We will likely be expanding sites over the next couple of weeks. The child does need to be present to pick those meals up. That is the, that is a portion of the waiver that we receive to be able to actually put them together, is that they must be present to pick it up. Be your best community selves, be your best neighbors right now. Offer to bring a child if you have transportation and the child's family doesn't. Offer to do the, I love the walking school bus idea that came from a community member, where if you're within walking distance of one of the sites, pretend to be a walking school bus and bring the kids with you to the site, get them out of the house for a little bit, maintain safe distance, of course. And just expanding on that a little bit, we're all, we're in uncharted waters. We're all doing the best we can to identify where we need solutions from the leadership in the community, and that is number one, why we value your input so much. So please don't hesitate to reach out. And number two, because we're in uncharted territory, we aren't always going to have immediate answers. We may have some missteps, but we're all doing the best we can. Many of, many people on the leadership team, the mayor and her staff, the superintendent working very, very long hours, trying to identify how we can be proactive and how we can keep people safe. And I want to just end with a huge thank you to Superintendent Harper, who has been self-isolated, not feeling well since Wednesday of last week, and working over the phone and over email just tirelessly over all of those days. And she's shown real leadership in trying to manage what is really unmanageable at this point, and I'm very, very appreciative of her leadership, and I want to make sure that is recognized. Member Exstrom, a comment, please.
As always, I have a question.
Yes.
So I hear loud and clear that age up to 18, we have special needs students that are up to age 21, 22, who may be in circumstances where they could benefit from those meals as well. Is there, we know if there's exceptions being made, as long as they are a student within the school district?
I don't have guidance on that, but perhaps the superintendent could address that in her report.
I do.
All right, and we'll move right into the superintendent's report now.
Great. I'm picking up now. I just want to note that the line does drop out. I am calling back in on my third, third attempt to calling back in, so I didn't miss, I didn't hear the whole question from Member Exstrom, but I did hear the mayor and chair's reports. So good evening, everybody. It is so odd to be participating remotely. I joked earlier this evening with the chair that the phrase "teleconference" has become so embedded in the communal psyche of our state, our city, our country, maybe in the last couple of days, that it's now part of my three-year-old's play. When I heard her playing with her dollies, they were playing teleconference. That can tell you something. So thanks for indulging in this new normal. I think I've been on, you know, just shy of a dozen conference calls a day, and, you know, we're really getting a lot of work done despite some unusual circumstances. And I just want to thank everybody for pulling together in what is a definitely unusual time, but an opportunity for all of us to demonstrate leadership and put our students and our staff first, just pull together. And I really am proud to be part of a remarkable team that's doing just that. I'm going to summarize some things. Some of this is a repeat for some of you. There's been so much information coming that I do just want to make sure that the facts are clear. I'll try to go through some of it, but please, if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask. And I will say at the beginning that we try very hard to update our website and keep information up to date. So if you go to GPSK12.org from home, you can see, as recently as the mayor's press release from this afternoon, we have posted there, along with many of the things I'm going to reference. So as you know, the governor has ordered a three-week suspension of school operations, and I'm going to share some of the language described by the Commissioner of Education about this. The superintendents of Massachusetts are in regular communication with the commissioner. And so in addition to the guidance that's issued publicly, we're almost, almost always daily and sometimes multiple times a day in communication as the situation evolves. I'm going to share some of his comments. The governor, of course, ordered a three-week suspension of school operations for educational purposes at all public and private elementary and secondary K-12 schools in the Commonwealth, not including residential and day schools, beginning tomorrow, Tuesday, March 17, continuing until Tuesday, April 7. This does not necessarily affect the availability of food. Chair Poirotti just commented on food, and I'll start by adding good news. We have expanded our sites as of today, meaning they will go into effect tomorrow. Newton School, the middle school and the high school are already food sites, and starting tomorrow, we have added Oak Courts, Leyden Woods, the YMCA, and Days Inn. So we will have four more food sites for tomorrow, still from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and we are offering the day's lunch along with the next morning's breakfast as a grab-and-go style. And we are asking everyone to maintain that safe distance that you heard the chair mention, so please pick it up and then return home. Returning to the commissioner's comments, he underscored the governor's recommendations that it is critical during this period of temporary school closure that students and their families stay home, as well as school staff, that they stay home as much as possible. And if you leave your home, to strictly follow social distancing guidelines by avoiding crowds, canceling social gatherings, and maintaining a safe separation of at least six feet from others. He underscored that closing schools and restricting access will have little impact on public health if the community doesn't help follow these best practices in good faith. There is also a request for school personnel to develop plans for ensuring that families have access to essential non-academic services. This includes the meal service delivery that we worked hard over the weekend to put in place, and also the special education resources for families. But I want to be very clear, the commissioner has not asked Massachusetts to go to a virtual learning platform, meaning unlike some colleges and universities, we are not asking our teachers to become online instructors. It is simply not practical for a pre-K to 12 system, and we want to underscore that the Commissioner of Education is asking us that that's not quite the direction to go in, and even if we were to do that, it would not count as approved educational time in our 180-day attendance requirement.
Oh, no.
Oh, no. Oh, no. Super interrupted. We'll just be patient while the superintendent reconnects with the line.
Every time that, that's something getting disconnected.
Yeah.
I'm not having a problem. I'm staying connected for some reason.
Do you want a landline or a mobile?
Mobile.
Mobile here, no problem.
Yeah, you're, both of you are coming in, Wes.
I have no idea when it cut out.
You were talking about the commissioner, it's clear that they don't count as days of instruction?
Online.
Online, right.
So if we were to go to full online, it would not count as time on learning? And that's not the direction at this point. The last day of school, however, will not extend beyond the 185th scheduled day of school. So essentially, days that were made up, that were not held before March 15 due to snow or other reasons have to be added on to the end of the year, but not beyond our scheduled 185th day of the school year. So we are not going to, for example, require students to make up school in July and August in order to meet their attendance or graduation requirements. The commissioner sees this as an important equity issue because some districts across the state are prepared to go to a one-on-one Chromebook, laptop environment, and other districts simply don't have those resources. And so this is really for equity, and because you can't simply replicate the online, sorry, the classroom teaching environment in an online environment in a K-12 setting. I think rather than talk much more at you, I prefer to take questions, especially since it's hard to tell how well you can hear me. And I do want to just note and thank the mayor for the leadership at the city level to close public access to buildings as a, as a public health measure, and to note we will be doing the same. And that deep cleaning is taking place in all of our schools right now across the district, every school building, and to thank the custodians, the unsung heroes of our schools, who, along with our food service workers, are making sure that this is taking place in and amidst this shutdown. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Who has questions from the school committee? Member Karen, and then Member Exstrom.
I just want to start by saying thank you for everybody's constant and wonderful communication, forwarding of information we needed as the situation changed hourly, minutely, over and over and over. We met at the Health Safety Facilities Committee on Tuesday. We discussed a lot of wonderful things. They all went out the window quite quickly because this just kept changing. So I was just really amazed and just not really surprised because I expected it to be this way, but it was really wonderful to not be questioning and wondering how things were turning out, because I knew, I was being informed with every step of the way. The only, I just wanted to ask, it's going to sound like a weird way to ask those questions, but I'm going to ask it anyway for clarification. So the same last day of school stands as it was on Friday for now. That's it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Days through the Friday, March, let's see, let me look at the dates. The date was the 15th, so yesterday. Any date, any day missed before yesterday has to be made up up until the 185th day of school, which is our regularly scheduled end of the school year, because it's 180 days plus five snow days.
Thank you. What day is that, end of day?
I do wish I had that calendar in front of me. I do not, but I will send it out to the full committee, and we will widely publicize it. I just don't want to say the wrong date because I'm not looking at it.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, sure.
Member Extron, please.
So I just want to follow up with what I was asking Amy. We have students from nineteen to twenty-two who are special needs, and I understand the intention that that's the food service options or the meals being offered are only to those who are eighteen. People with special needs are typically in situations of poverty. Is there some way that, that it can, the food service or the meals can be extended to people who are enrolled in our school district and still, who fall outside of that eighteen-year-old range, that are nineteen to twenty-two?
That's a great question. I will follow up and find out as soon as possible. Thank you.
Other questions for Superintendent Harper?
I have one.
Sure.
Do we know what the guideline is for students who are in residential placement?
Can you say more about your question, Member Hollins?
Well, if someone is in a residential special education program, like an inpatient program, are those also being closed? Are those staying open if we know?
They are not being closed. It is specifically not including, the school closure does specifically not include residential or day schools for special needs students.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the school committee for the superintendent?
I do just want to add that the principals are working with staff, and so we recognize there's a tremendous number of questions out there, including for parents, and there's a real desire from the teachers and the principals to communicate that information out. As you can imagine, because this was announced late on Sunday evening from Governor Baker, this is a tremendous change, and it is not yet clear what, what this duration, you know, means for teachers preparing work and sharing with families and so forth. So we are in the process of collaborating internally, and then we'll be sharing out and be in touch with families over the coming days.
Thank you. Subcommittees or school committee representatives, do we have any report of that nature? Okay, we'll move, yes.
I just have a question for the subcommittees. Are we planning forthcoming meetings, policy, et cetera?
So.
It's difficult to get, you and those.
Policy, yeah, I need to reach out to everyone to figure out what our plan is for that.
Yeah, okay.
We had set a date for policies. I'm not finding it. We finally.
Friday, I think.
Yeah, it's the twenty-third, wasn't it?
That's Monday.
Monday, the twenty-third, I believe, is what we ended up with.
Yeah, it is.
But I got to reach out what our plan is, if Liz's plan is, and verify all of that.
Okay, okay.
And then with Health, Safety and Facilities, we decided to meet the first Thursday at nine-thirty is our standard meeting time, so the first Thursday of every month, which in this case would be April second. If we need to meet sooner because of situations unfolding, we will figure that out. But at the moment, we're following all larger above-us guidelines, so we don't need to do all that much right now.
Thank you. Yeah.
Actually, I wanted to ask the mayor a question, thinking about the budget committee. We know if the state is going to be changing deadlines based on, I heard a rumor to that effect.
On the governor's press conference last night, he indicated there would be some relief from deadlines for municipalities in their twenty-one budgets.
Yeah.
There were no details provided, yes.
But I can stop fretting about that. Someone else is thinking about it. Don't worry.
Yeah.
Just speaking of deadlines, the closure, the three-week closure overlaps with tenth-grade MCAS, so the tenth-grade MCAS will be rescheduled, and there are other upcoming deadlines from the Department of Education that may also be relaxed, and we'll be looking for more information about that as we, as we progress in this period.
I thought that May SATs got canceled.
Correct.
I have one other question.
Member Hollins, please.
Could, does Superintendent clarify how many snow days we had this year?
I don't have it in front of me. Somebody else might have a better count on this because you all feel the pain, but I would say probably four to date.
Three and a half.
Four.
Three and a half, says Susan. Yeah, that counts as four.
So we're, we're being excused fifteen days for the virus emergency and three and a half we had for snow days. So it's a total of eighteen and a half days, and we still stay within the one-hundred-and-eighty-five day limit. Okay, I was just trying to figure that out. Thank you.
I'm, I'm not sure if I would say it that way. I would just say that regardless of how many days from now until the end of the year that school is in session, the district is responsible for going until their currently scheduled one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth day.
Which I believe is June seventeenth or eighteenth.
That sounds right, Member Karen.
What was going through my mind were contracts we have that are, you know, based on school days, like transportation contracts, and I was just thinking whether they change the amount we pay these trans, certain contracts. If there's a significant difference in days, but I was just thinking about it. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move into new business at this point. I believe we have covered item A already. Congratulations again to the Greenway hockey team. And let's talk about item B. The, we did get an update today on the international trip. Superintendent Harper, would you just fill me in if I missed anything on this one? There is going to be a, kind of a hold harmless type arrangement where students who were scheduled to go on that trip can have a reschedule within about two years' time. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a peace of mind policy, and they've updated that to be more reflective of the fact that we have some seniors that were scheduling to travel, and they can't just use the voucher for next year. So they'll receive an automatic future travel voucher for the full amount, good through September twenty-two. That allows everybody to rebook. If they can't, but they still want to travel, they can use it towards any other EF tour. And the full amount is also transferable to somebody else, and then they still have an option if they want to exchange their voucher for a cash refund, but it is less a certain amount because they have some non-recoverable payments. And that's after a significant amount of advocacy on behalf of the superintendent's group, myself, and Ms. Klutier, and some of the parents involved. We really wanted to ensure that the students were not responsible for fees or for a cancellation that was obviously well outside of their control.
Great, thanks. Also, within the realm of COVID-nineteen preparedness, we are prepared to put forward a motion at this time regarding paying employees in the district, and I did prepare something ahead of time to attempt to pass, and recording Secretary Harper, I have forwarded you an email with the motion as we're going to attempt it, so hopefully you have that language.
Thank you.
I would like, I would like a motion now from a school committee member to pay all Greenfield Public Schools contractual employees according to their regularly scheduled hours for the period of time from March sixteen to April sixth, excluding subcontracted individuals with their work assignments as determined by their direct supervisor.
Omo.
That's a, a motion from Member Extron and a second from Member Karen. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. What are, what is meant by subcontracted individuals?
Subcontracted individuals, for example, would be bus drivers. They are contractual employees.
Sorry, can I clarify that, Chair?
Please.
So, for example, a, a, a bus driver that works for an outside company, not one of our own drivers. So a salaried employee or an hourly employee, anybody who's employed by the school committee would be considered a contractual employee. Anybody who fills out paperwork as an independent contractor, who goes through a different process and is not considered an employee but a contractor or a subcontractor, would be in a different category.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions?
I have one.
Please, Member Hollins.
I, I completely support, support this, but I do have a question. Our contract for employees, in particular instructional assistants, also teachers, and I don't know how many other sets of employees, are based on a number of days. What we have in our budget is based on a number of days, and we, to my knowledge, we don't have money in the budget for more than that number of days. And I don't remember what it is, but I think for, say, instructional assistants, it's one-hundred-and-eighty-two or eighty-three days. I don't remember. I'm just wondering what happens if we go to the one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth day in the calendar, and it ends up being one-hundred-and-eighty-five days of pay. That, what do we do then? Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
The salary in our, hm? The salary we have in our budget for everybody on a contract is for a number of days, for ten months. So if we, if we do the complete, and we're going to have to go to the one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth day, so my question is, what happens if going to the one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth day ends up being, I'm making this up, one-hundred-and-eighty-six days of pay, and we only have one-hundred-and-eighty-three in the budget?
Superintendent Harper, do you want to try to address that? Would you like me to try to address that?
I'm not sure that I can understand the question as it's configured, so if somebody else wants to start. I can, I can happily clarify, just I don't actually understand the, the way it's phrased.
Hi, this is Steve. Maybe I can throw something in here.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, so what Susan is describing is that if the schools going to the one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth day, because generally, say, a paraprofessional on a snow day, that day is lost and then made up at the end of the year. So what we're essentially, what we're doing is paying people on a lost day. So, yeah, it, it may bleed into the one-hundred-and-eighty-fifth day by a couple of days, but I, I, I just got ahold of this motion right now, so I haven't done any calculation, but I would have to do a more in-depth calculation with this and try to figure out if that, in fact, was going to happen, given the fact that, and then what we can always do is the last paycheck, we can work something out possibly with the union or something like that to, to modify the last paycheck in order to bring us some in budget.
Was the question clear to everyone? I could try it again.
No, I got it. No, we got it. It's clear. I think that, I'm just going to maybe make a muckier answer to this, but, but, so say the three, we're going to pretend this three week didn't even happen for a minute, because it doesn't exist, in that we're not paying it, we don't have to make it up, we don't have to add it to the end. So if this hadn't happened, we only have to make up one-hundred-and-eighty-four days, because that's all we've missed is snow days. We don't have to go to one-hundred-and-eighty-five, no matter what. We only have to go to one-hundred-and-eighty-four. So these are the days they would have been making up anyway. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand that. My question was.
So only paying them for one-hundred-and-eighty-five days. It's, I have to, yeah.
Please, Member Extron.
I have to think that we aren't the only school committee that's going to have that question.
Right.
And I have to think that the governor or the department for Massachusetts is going to have to somehow address that with everyone, because obviously, we're not the only school district. So I think that there's probably a larger question that will be answered. My hope is that they'll throw money at us, but, you know, everything is changing, excuse me, so quickly. I don't know that there's a way to be predicting as opposed to just having some knowledge and, and keeping our eyes open for information.
Right, and I think the important thing right now is that we have no way of knowing how this will unfold beyond April sixth. The motion is only for this period, March sixteen to April sixth, and it could very well be we have to revisit what to do next. And so it certainly makes sense to make a note of this question, this concern regarding pay for students, hourly employees. If the school year goes to one-hundred-and-eighty-five days, how would we address that? But it's one of many concerns. We don't have answers yet and would like to have as we move forward. But the, I think the most important thing is this could extend even longer than the three weeks we've already set aside, and we'll be revisiting this again.
Could I just say one more comment?
Tom.
It has to do with the way the motion was worded, and maybe no one would agree, but another way to word the motion is to honor the full contract for our employees, the full number of days, to, to honor that and to pay people fully for the amount of time they've been contracted.
But the motion is only for March sixteen to April sixth. We're not dealing with their full contract at this point.
Okay.
Are we ready to move to a vote? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Member Extron?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Here we go, Nick. Yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Extron, yes? We are unanimous.
The motion passes. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
I would now also entertain a motion for new business items D through H to be tabled.
Some moved.
Hold on.
Okay, so I have a motion from Member Wall. Member Johnson, will you take that as a second?
Yes.
Second from Member Johnson. Any discussion of that? Yes.
Yes.
I just would like to ask the superintendent how she feels about tabling letter F. This came up at a recent Health and Safety Facilities Subcommittee meeting, and we realized that we really need to be moving on this. If it's a, if it's fine in that way, because we're not in school for the next three weeks, and it's okay, that's fine with me. I just, I know it was a really important thing that we needed to do.
I really appreciate that, Member Karen. I would ask that these be added to the next possible meeting, but in light of the current situation, I would be okay with tabling. Thank you.
And I, I should have clarified a little bit further. The first thing is, I am anticipating that we will have to have a specially scheduled school committee meeting rather shortly before the next scheduled meeting in April, which I believe is April eighth. And then the second thing I should have added is that a big reason for tabling the remainder of these items is, as I mentioned earlier, the superintendent, the mayor, and others have been working nonstop on preparedness, emergency preparedness, and have not been working on the other items of the district. And it's always important for us to prepare as much as possible for items, and that just hasn't happened, which is why I'm asking for these to be tabled. I should have clarified that much better. I apologize. Mayor Weigardner, please.
Item G, the van purchase. I just want to remind you that there is a deadline with the existing contract provider, the van provider, that is part of an existing negotiation.
Uh huh. For the RFP, there's a deadline.
Yeah. And that is Wednesday of this week. So I'm guessing you're not meeting again before Wednesday. I'm wondering if you would consider that as a, not being tabled.
Could I ask a question? If Steve is on the line, it would, it might be helpful to know if there's any extension of that type of deadline, as we're hearing about certain leniency in other timelines at the state level, including like closure of the court systems and other legislative and executive branch type activities. Does anyone have that information?
I also have Phil Ward.
Phil's here, too.
Wonderful.
Phil, do you know of any extensions of deadlines?
Nothing related to this, no.
Were you able to hear that? Nothing, no deadline extensions related to this?
Have we, have we asked the people we are planning to purchase the van? If they would...
Except for the second time.
For the second extension.
Given a closure of City Hall, I Given a closure of City Hall, I think that might be prudent.
They've been holding these vans for over three weeks.
They still- they have them on site and all those things? Okay, that's the push. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Please, Member Holland, please.
Um, it's about passing on E, a school committee rep for the teacher negotiations. Either last meeting or the meeting before, we had a representative from the teachers' union who said the- the teacher contract ran out last June, that it was already February, whatever month it was, we're in March, and that we hadn't even picked someone to negotiate, even though it's almost a year since their contract ran out. Do we have to put off E because it's only identifying who's going to-
You're talking about letter D, correct? An update in the unit A.
I don't know. I must be looking- I'm looking at the March 11th notice, but the one that says-
Yep.
School committee rep, is that-
Yep, okay.
Does that have to be passed because they appealed to us to please not keep putting that off and to just identify someone who's going to represent, be the negotiator?
Well-
Let's not make any hardship on the superintendent. It's just our deciding who's going to be the rep.
I would say that's up to the Chair if the Chair is prepared to take that matter into consideration tonight after having, um, prepared really only for the emergency motions, given the situation.
Uh, Members- uh, Mayor Wiedegartner, please.
Do we have a date to go back into negotiations yet?
We do not.
Okay.
No. We have not prepared anything.
Have we- but have we even- I'm not aware we've even started because the first- isn't the first step figuring out who's going to represent us? Anyway, that's my thought, not to- not to put that off.
I might suggest this may be considered an executive session if there's any further deliberation needed.
I think that's a wonderful idea to move it to executive session. We probably shouldn't talk about it any further here. Um, okay, and the van purchase is what we were talking about. Uh, we- it does not appear we can easily ask for another deadline as the extension. That's what I'm hearing. Uh, how would we like to handle this? Yeah, Phil?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I had a little technical difficulty there. Um, given the fact that, uh, that Phil has that deadline, um, but given the fact that that, um, a- a lot of our- our perspective on this whole thing has changed considerably in the past, uh, week or two. Um, you know, it- it's something that we need, it's something that we can go ahead with. Um, the vans, uh, the lowest qualified bidder was a Dodge dealership out of, um, uh, the eastern part of the state. And I think what we would do at this point is just award the bid and then move forward from there.
So, we would need-
What is the- what is the action being considered tonight?
That's why I was just gonna say we would need a motion. I need someone to help me put together a motion of what we would need considering.
Can I just- I just want to state for the record that I have not had an opportunity to review the bids, given the situation. And the committee may choose to act without it and, you know, proceed. Uh, the mayor's the chief procurement officer for the city. Having said that, in typical circumstances, um, there would have been more time for a review of this. Uh, as was discussed between the mayor, the superintendent, and the- the financial officers on the city and school side, that was the intention prior to the COVID-19 situation, which has diverted attention obviously to other matters.
Mayor Wiedegartner?
I would ask Phil to give us a timeline and an update, um, based on his knowledge of how this has been treated. Um, I think those bids have been outlawed for COVID-19.
Yes, uh, I had forwarded the good information to Steve, um, I'm guessing, uh, two weeks ago. So, he has full knowledge of the bids as they came in. Uh, the high bid was, uh, over $207,000. The low bid with an adjustment is $158,000 in the high. But, uh, the vans themselves, uh, once we place the order, uh, you know, the seasonal installations needed for vinyl seats and so forth. So, that will extend it out, uh, probably two weeks from the date of the sale. Uh, we want to place the order.
What kind of vans are they?
They're Dodge vans, seven passenger.
So, let's have a motion that we can discuss. We should at least have a motion on the table would be my preference. Um, I would-
Don't we-
Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Didn't we- don't we have a motion on the table to table the items or did we not get that far?
We did have a motion to table the items. So, let's- thank you, just- Member Johnson. So, let's address that first. Um, and, you know, of course, if people want to go back. Or I would take a friendly amendment to exclude from tabling the van purchase, which is item G. Yeah.
I'll make that amendment.
Wiedegartner, uh, would make that amendment. Would that be accepted? Member Wall? Yeah, so now the new motion would be that we would table all but item G. Um, and then we can go back to that one. Uh, let's move to a vote on, um, tabling everything except item G. Member Prayati? Yes. Member Wall? Yes. Here we go. Yes. For Karen? Yes. Member Johnson?
Yes.
For Holland?
Yes.
Member Extrim, yes? So, that motion passes. Thank you. All of those will be on the next agenda. And we're now talking about the van purchase. And, Member Johnson, thank you for always keeping me on track with my emo- my, uh, emotions.
I second that emotion.
Uh, okay, so, uh, we need a motion on the table to, uh, approve the van purchase uh, due to an existing RFP deadline of Wednesday, March 18. And the full amount is 180- 58,00662. Do it. So, move. So, move by Mayor Wiedegartner. Do I have a second? Second. Second from Member Extrim and discussion. Member Extrim?
Are we buying this vehicle and not just going for whatever it's for?
Right. Would you like to find film?
Are we buying what is the best vehicle for what we're going to be doing? Or are we just looking strictly at price?
No, no, these are, uh, these are highly rated by JD Power and Consumer Reports. Out of 15 vans that were compared, uh, they fell into, uh, they were rated number one by Consumer Reports. And see JD Power, I don't have that right here, but, uh, they were, yes, they were rated in the top three.
And all the vans were for the same van? I mean, all the vehicles were for the same van?
Yes, they're all the same van.
Okay, thank you.
Question?
Member Holland?
Then, do I understand that we're buying them all and we're not lease purchasing any?
That was the directive I was given, yes. Uh, the financing on this that's available is, uh, the best I found out of three or four different banks is 2.71%. Uh, four payment, three years, which means one payment upfront and then three payments in the following three years.
Member Karen and then Mayor Wiedegartner, please.
Um, where will the- who will be doing the maintenance on these vans? If the warranty is all the way out there, it's like to go out there or?
If there's any warranty work, it's any available Dodge dealer, uh, local, which happens to be longer. Uh, and any normal maintenance like oil changes, tires and so forth can be done by the DPO.
Thank you.
Any further discussions? Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Wiedegartner.
I just, um, want to be clear about the process of getting, going out to bid. We, uh, because of the cost, we had to go out to bid, uh, under the, um, appropriate purchasing or procurement of items for the city of Greenfield and the school department. So, um, they were the top three bidders. They were the lowest of the top three, I'd say.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
One?
Please, Member Holland.
It's for the business manager. Is it still the plan that the payment made in this year will be from the Transportation Revolving Fund ultimately?
Ultimately, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions, clarifications, comments? Okay, so we'll move to a vote on the motion to purchase the vans, $158,662 from the Transportation Revolving account. Member Wall? Yes. Member Karen? Yes. Member Prayati? Oh, skip me for a second. Member Holland?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Wiedegartner? Yes. Myself, yes? Member Prayati? Sure, yes. That is unanimous. Okay, so that is the remainder of the new business items. Do we have, uh, other business that needs to be addressed? Okay, now, we will move into executive session at this time. Massachusetts General Law, uh, Section 30A, subsection 21, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. So, the, uh, regular session is assured 8:10. We will not come back into regular session after the executive session. Do I have a motion?
I have a question. I have a question before you take a motion. I just wanted to, um, I'm wondering what the plan is for keeping the executive session, um, confidential, given that some of us are dialing in on a shared conference line? And do we know how many people are on it? Can we- can we make sure that there are people in the executive session?
We'll hang- we'll hang up from the conference line entirely and we'll have- we'll call the three of you on cell phones.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I have a question also.
Sure.
It was, uh, this motion is strictly for non-union personnel and contract negotiations with non-union personnel. But before when I mentioned something about a rep for a school committee for teacher negotiations or a suggestion, we take it up in non-public session. So, we couldn't with this motion, correct?
Um, technically, that is correct, but we can amend the motion.
Thank you.
So, the motion would be to call executive session, Massachusetts General Law, Section 30A, subsection 21. I don't know the subsection for contractual union employees. We'll have to just do that in good faith. Um, do I have a motion? So, second is- Okay, motion from Member Extrim, second from Member Karen and Member Holland. And, uh, any discussion? We'll move right to a vote. All those in- oh, roll call vote. Member Wall? Yes. Member Karen? Yes. Member Prayati? Yes. Member Holland?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes. And myself, we are unanimous.